I promise. Volunteer that have my name in the paper. But I just can't. So that in my mind, it's like too sharp. I don't know that it's right. Well, that's what she would say.
We were gonna get that tremor out here over time.
Oh, I know.
You got hit from this or something. I seen it.
Oh, I know. That's when I think about it. With all the changes that we're going through. See, my guy is one of the leaders. Diana's not there. I mean, well.
Yeah, yeah.
Might be going to your spam.
Can't worry about that. That new tremor, yeah, I need to get that. That's awesome.
Well, I'm going Friday.
I have heard. Oh, because you get some bar out.
On a Friday?
What time does that start at?
I kind of have to. I kind of have to now.
Okay, let's start the June meeting. United Council. Mr. Fry, you want to make some comments?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to read the minutes, say the email. And the only thing I seen was where Mr. Hoot made a approval request, transfers money. Mr. Henge, that can do it. So we might not want to put it in the same. That's the only thing I seen.
I'll make the motion to approve with correction.
Actually make some motion to approve with correction.
I'll second.
The end of seconds. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Yeah.
Any votes? Okay. We're gonna start out with Mr. Fry.
Good morning, Council, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to come in and talk to you today. As almost all of you know, I'm State Representative Randy Fry, representing about a third of the county, southern portion of the county. I do chair the Veterans Affairs and Public Safety Committee. I'm not only coming to the State Representative, but also as chairman of the committee. Over the last thirteen years, I've served in the General Assembly. I've worked on something I'm very passionate about, and I believe it needs attention, and that's the volunteer fire service funding. Our volunteer fire service, we've studied it for years, and our volunteer fire service is dying. It literally is. The average age of volunteer firefighters is in their fifties. I can tell you, I've been a career firefighter for most of my life. A firefighter in their upper fifties and sixties has no business being in a working fire. Tremendously demanding physical job, and so we have to continue to recruit young people to replace those of us who are aging out. So a couple of things have, three things at least, that have come to our attention that we need to do to try to improve our volunteer fire service as far as the membership. First thing is, it raised lots and lots of money. It always have to raise money. It's very time consuming to do a fish fry and do a chicken dinner or breakfast. And as you can see, I attend way too many of those. And so we at the state, in this current budget, until ten oh one, which goes into effect July first, has $10 million in it for firefighter, air packs, and gear. The fire departments across the state would do an asset management plan. They show us how much of fire gear they have. That's a need replacement, how many air packs need replacement. It was submitted grant application to the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. Department of Homeland Security would then issue gear or air packs to them based on what's available. $10 million is a lot of money. It will be used most likely pretty fast. And hopefully, in the next budget, there'll be that much or more to continue this process. What we're trying to do is limit the amount of money that has to be raised by the volunteer fire department in order to keep the doors open. If you're a young family, and many of you are, you know that if you're at the volunteer fire department running, making runs, you're also there cleaning up, cooking, preparing for a meal. Takes a lot of time. When your wife says you need to be home or be down at the fire station, you're gonna be home. We just can't continue to keep our young firefighters, the dropout rates pretty high. The other thing is training. Things difficult, training's expensive, and sometimes it's not available. So in this budget, $6 million to fund firefighter training. Back in 2015, I passed a bill that created the Indiana State Fire Academy. But that bill has never been funded until now. So what the Training Academy is, is a hub and spoke concept. The main hub would be in Plainfield, next to the Police Academy, where the firefighters could do specialized training. It can only take place there. But the spokes would reach out to regional fire training facilities that would be established around the state. Our goal is to have one of those every thirty miles from any volunteer fire department in the state. Therefore, the travel time would be much less for a firefighter and then make those classes available at those regional training facilities. We absolutely cannot cut the training for the firefighters. The buyer does not care if you're paid or a volunteer to be there. The person that is trapped in the automobile only wants one thing: out. They don't care if you're a volunteer or a career. They just want you to be the very best that's ever been, and so does a heart attack patient and so on. We cannot decrease our training, but we can make it more effective, financially affordable, and close by. So those two things are in the budget. And I mentioned fundraising, and fundraising is a major, major obstacle for our volunteer fire departments. I have a department in my district that represent four, all of, part of four counties in southern Indiana, not this county. I have a volunteer fire department that receives $1,000 a year from their trustee. Their insurance on their building allowance is $10,000 a year. They do bingo every week and serve food just to keep the doors open and the lights on. It's insane. We do not ask our police department, nor should we, to do it for free. We don't ask our EMS. We don't ask people at Flower Snow to pick up our tracks to do it for free. But we've gotten so accustomed to the volunteer fire department doing it for free that we think it's gonna be there forever, but it isn't. I tell you, it's dying. The numbers don't lie. It's dying. So what do we do? Do we let it go away? If we do, it's a $4 billion a year hit to the state, and that's what they save us, about $4 billion a year. Can't afford that. We can't afford to close stations. When we have stations that close, it's because they can't staff the apparatus. We had a fire fatality this year in Indiana where a woman died in a house fire across the street from the fire station. Fire station didn't respond. Didn't have anybody. We can't have that. And so what we're gonna have is, we do, and we are having departments close around the state, not many. Hopefully, that'll mitigate that with what we're talking about today. When one closes, the ones who are on the outside, they increase the pressure on them. Everyone knows higher, their response times are higher. Response time equals survivability. Fire doubles in size every two minutes. So the longer it takes for the firefighters, EMS, to ride and take care of you, the lower your survivability rate is. There's a thing in EMS term called the golden hour. The golden hour is the amount of time that have to be between when you're critically injured or critically ill until you're on the operating table. After an hour, your survivability drops about 50%. The quicker you can have the apparatus there, the quicker you can have the treatment there, the higher the survivability. So I came up with a plan, working with Chairman Jeff Thompson, Chairman of Ways and Means. Took a number of years, thirteen years actually, to get this done. I tried, tried, tried. The former chairman of Ways and Means wasn't interested. Chairman Thompson lives in a volunteer fire department area and gets it. Evidently, he eats too much chicken, too. So we came up with a plan to create a local option income tax just for the volunteer fire service. And it's 0.01, 0.05% local option income tax. 0.01% on $50,000 a year salary is $36 a year. I started this morning over Speedway with Coke Zero. It cost me $2. This is $36 a year, less than a dollar a week. If you can't afford that kind of fire service, you probably can't afford fire protection. However, it is, a lot of people, and I don't disagree with them, think that the state of Indiana, with its surpluses, we should pay it. Some of you wouldn't agree. So do I. So we did it. We cut your income tax by 2026 to 2.9%. That same person making $50,000 a year will save $125 a year in income tax because the state of Indiana cut their income tax rate. We didn't feel like it was right to mandate this local option income tax on the counties. Some counties may want to go all the way up to 0.05. Some counties may only want to do 0.01. For DeCato County, it's about $750,000 a year if you do 0.01. But even in my math, $36 a year is far less than $125 I'm gonna save. We basically paid for it upfront. If you want to do 0.02, you're still in the black. In 0.03, you're still in the black. So we did pay for it upfront, but we didn't want to mandate it. We don't want to do that. I don't like it when the federal government mandates to me, and I'm sure you don't like it when we mandate to you. But we did pay for it upfront, so you can do it if you choose to do it. It's your choice. Each county council must approve it. How's the money given out to the departments? We tried several different ideas, and Chairman Thompson came up with this one, which I think is a pretty good idea. It's based on the assessed property value less farm ground. What we were trying to do is say that a fire department that has an industrial complex, or maybe Honda, or maybe something like that, would receive far more money than a department that, pretty much farming community. They don't have the run volume. They don't have the responsibility. They don't need as much money. So that's the way it would work. If you chose to do 0.01%, would be divided, that's 750,000 approximately, would be divided by those departments based on assessed property value less farm ground. So I have to tell you, as I, as I close, that this is the greatest opportunity we've had in my lifetime to save the volunteer fire service. If this isn't the solution, somebody, please tell me what is. We have to find one. Because if we don't, we are going to be dealing with fire departments that can no longer keep the doors open. And we see some of them around our area. Some of them struggle. All of them are struggling for individuals to join. We also renewed the volunteer firefighter scholarships. So you can go to IGTEC Community College free of charge if you're a volunteer fireman in Indiana. You can get your degree. You have, people getting nursing degrees with zero debt because they're volunteer firefighters. We're trying to save it at the state level, but this is an option that you guys have, that you can do here at the state, at the county level. So that's, that's pretty much it. Mr. Thompson, if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
What's, what is our funding for all of our volunteer fire departments?
Currently?
What would it take to, and we, we give them $86,000 a year out of, how's your public safety tax now? A year.
Eighty-six hundred?
Eighty-six thousand.
Hundred and two.
Thousand.
It's divided between all of them.
Between them, divide, yes. They get 8600 a piece, but we give them maybe $6,000, correct?
So, so to answer your question, Eric, this is statewide legislation. I don't know what the cost is to each of your departments in accounting. What I do know is some of them get money from the county council. Some of them get money from the township trustee, some from a community, and all of them need more money. So what this one does is, you would determine what percent, 0.1 to 0.5, that you wanted to do. And that money would be divided based on that property value.
That's just for volunteer fire departments?
It's for fire departments, but predominantly volunteer, yes.
Did you say 0.01 would be 750, is that what you said?
And about $36 a year, and I got those numbers from Ways and Means. My math isn't very good, so I don't really own it. I made sure I got it from them. And then saving $50,000 a year salary would save $125 a year in income tax savings. So that's the more than pays for even up to 0.03. 0.03 could be in excess.
Does the city council have to do anything?
Nothing. No one else but you. The county council approves it with an ordinance, and that's the end of it.
So the, when they divide the money, is that something that falls on the county to take care of, divide the funding? Or is it state level?
I think the Department of Local Government Finance can give you the numbers of who has what percentage of assessed value less farm ground. They have those numbers. And then the county would then make the money.
Numbers to divide the money?
Yes. This goes into effect July first. Bill is signed into law. It goes into effect July first. It's House General Act 1054. It was, I'm sorry, 1454. And it was authored by Representative Craig Snow. It is the Department of Local Government Finance bill, their annual bill. It's very thick, tons of different provisions in it, deals with all the different tax changes. But this is one provision that I was able to get into bill. Goes into effect July the first. You made a decision to do it by, you would begin in 2024.
This money's going basically for training for firefighters?
This would be to offset their operating costs. The training. The training, we're paying $6 million a year, a year, $10 million a year. But this is, this is to help them pay for fuel. Frankly, it's to help them stop spending so much time raising money so they can spend more time with their families and more time making runs and being what we ask them to do is be emergency responder.
So the state doesn't have any, they didn't play restrictions on where the funding, it's just for operations?
No, correct. It's just, if we own the party, they're general fund, they would decide how to use it.
Is there a deadline on when we have to make a decision?
No, but it would take effect.
Takes effect, but we can decide to do it whenever we decide to want to do it.
You can, and you can also change the percentage if you decide to go with 0.01 this year and find out that's not quite enough. Or you'll go to 0.02 and think, well, that might have been too much. You back it down. What you do have to do though is, at the end of each year, the balance has to be zero. You have to pay it all without. You can't sit on a balance carry.
Is there any way to contact, anyone to volunteer fire departments need? I mean.
Absolutely.
It would be nice to know where to set them.
I'm sure your county has a firefighters association, fire team association. Get ahold of them and have them come in and talk to me. The other thing is, I spoke last evening to Ripley County. Their council decided to go ahead. Spoke three weeks ago with Jefferson County. And they were positive as well. Think this is gonna happen around the state. It may not happen in every county, and it certainly won't happen at the same rate in every county. Give you an example, city of Madison, 13,000 people still volunteer fire department. They are volunteer fire department because they can't afford to go to a career. They go to 0.05, so $4 billion a year. They can go to career and still not cost their citizens hardly anything. So that's an opportunity that we haven't had before.
Do I have any more questions?
I appreciate your all this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good. Free to hell.
I'm Little Wester. I'm acting as president of the Board of Directors of Florida Community Healthcare Clinic. And this is Emily Burden, who is our clinic director. She's been our clinic director for almost a year now. She took, you might be used to seeing Rosie steer here representing our clinic, but Emily is here doing a fantastic job for us now after Rosie retired. In front of you, you will see our copy of our request for support from the county council to the Community Healthcare Clinic in 2024. The council will probably remember that you've helped support this nonprofit agency through the use of the receipts from the riverboat revenue for several years now. This coming year, the clinic still needs your assistance to help low income families who are struggling to afford healthcare in our county. The clinic aims to provide mental, medical, and dental services necessary for patients under care and to promote long-term care, health, and wellness. When our citizens are healthy, they're able to obtain and sustain employment and provide financial stability for their families. This is easy to see how this helps the overall economy of our community and our county. Physical health and economic stability also contribute to the mental health of the residents of our county. The clinic currently serves the county with two paid nurse practitioners. Emily is one, providing medical services, and three volunteer dentists providing dental services. In 2022, there were 306 patient visits to the clinic. This year, in 2023, we're hoping to increase the number of visits from our county residents and increase our outreach to the community. To help doing, to do this, we are hoping to increase our immunization plans that we do in cooperation with the Health Department. We're planning to provide informational classes to assist patients who are dealing with diabetes, smoking, hypertension, and other classes to help us learning more healthy eating habits. This will all be done with cooperation with County Extension Office. And we're also trying to provide blood pressure screenings at the adult center as well as other venues. All of this is done to help increase the visibility in the county so that we can spread the word of the services that we offer to the population here. Currently, the clinic's day-to-day operations are managed by five part-time employees. A secretary who fortunately is also a medical assistant, an accountant, the clinic director, Emily, and two nurse practitioners. All of the dentists and physicians that work in our clinic, as well as corpsmen as our volunteer. There are approximately 30 volunteers who assist the clinic with all the things that need to get done. We feel that the greatest strength of this agency continues to be the high quality and personal care services provided by our medical staff. Significant challenges to the program have been increasing need to use social media. You've heard me talk about that before. And to, all to increase the awareness and outreach of our clinic and the need for fundraising as we must cover increasing costs of rent, liability, insurance, and equipment costs, including improved technology and dental machines that are aging and have to be replaced very soon. This year, the clinic is requesting $22,500 from the county council to assist with our expenses. This is the same amount as that we asked for last, for this, this year that we're seeking doing right now. Riverboat funds administered through the county council have been so appreciated and essential to the Community Healthcare Clinic in the past. With the exception of the year when we moved to the new facility, county council administered riverboat funds and United Fund have been the two main sources of our budgetary support. We hope that you, as you consider the county's budget for 2024, see the continuing benefits of the clinic to DeCato County and can continue to support it in your 2024 budget. That's about. Are there any questions or, yeah. The last page of your handout is, is our budget that we always share with the county as well.
So where are you at to date on your budget as far as your income versus expenses?
We know, this year, we have been, we have been, we see we have received half of what the United Fund has promised. That that's half of the $15,000. And Jim has been writing checks to us every now and for what the county council promised us for this year. Yes. We haven't spent the money on the dental machine as yet. Anthony Knowles is our dentist, and so he's looking for sources of used equipment. But right now, right now, one of the machines that we need is $11,000. So that's on the back burner. He's fixing it as frequently as he can. We currently have two of those machines, and I'm not sure the age of them. We also provide services for the DeCato County Detention Center. So all of the dental services for the jail, we're providing those. So we've, I've already seen a fair amount of inmates this year. We're happy to be able to do that. We also provide, kind of bridge those services when they come out of the jail before they can get medical assistance. So to get any kind of state insurance, you have to have a solidified, you have to approve of an address. So when they leave, not all of them have somewhere that they can go and can show that. So we have this gap of time where they can't really get hit or Medicaid, but they don't have the services inside the jail any longer. So we're also providing those gapping for the, for our inmates here in the county as well.
So it looks like the bulk of your increased expenses is rent and insurance.
Yes.
And then you're asking for almost $2,000 above what the increase in your operating cost is. I'm guessing that's to save for some of this equipment. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Equipment and supplies. And I, we're looking at numbers for the weekend, and we're currently at 75 patients. That's the number of visits this year, that's just how many patients we see from the medical side. Dental, we've been able to offer at least one dental clinic a month, and that's, again, all volunteer. We're writing off three dental patients that we've been able to serve. So our numbers are looking to be on the increased side this year. With that state, as many of you probably have heard, Medicaid and hit, they started recertifying everyone. So during COVID, everybody kind of slid by. They just kept rolling over. You know, I had a patient two weeks ago. She made $63 too much to keep her hip insurance. She does work full-time. They just don't offer benefits, and then she needs $63 too much. She requires an injection every six months that costs almost $3,000. So we were able to go through, the company manufactures that and get her assistance. But again, she still needs a medical provider to do that. So we are seeing a lot of, an increase in numbers as the year goes by, and we're seeing those state kind of type now.
I also have any other questions? Your increase in rent, is that gonna be something that they're gonna annually due to you out there?
We're not sure.
Man, that's pretty big. Jumped in the first year. Did you know that was gonna happen?
Oh, we knew from '22 to '23. We knew. They haven't. This is projected 2024.
Come in and said they were gonna raise it out.
They haven't. We're just trying to be reactive and not, yeah.
Proactive.
Correct. Not reactive, sorry. Yeah, yes.
Okay. So looking at your '23 budget, I mean, took in less than your expenses are showing. And you haven't paid for your machine yet. That's $11,000 off that bottom line. But how are you, if everything came to fruition and it went through, how are you offsetting the difference in the income versus the expenses?
Well, in the last couple of years, we have a savings account that we've had to delve into. And we've been resisting increasing the patient visit is $10 for a medical visit and $20 for the dental. We've been resisting doing that. And then trying to also do our, the smaller fundraiser grants that we have. We also, if someone can't pay, we still save them. I mean, we don't turn anybody over. And we realize that a larger fundraiser may be in the future.
I'll be honest with you. I'm hoping to board the health. Yeah, board the health. Down the road is what I'm hoping with, because the money we give you, we really, whatever riverboat funds they project coming in, we break it down to percentage. That's the reason you got $16,875 this year. So that's, we try to be fair to everybody coming down that riverboat fast.
Yes. You understand that. It's critical for every cent, but you're really.
But I'm hoping.
Yeah, I talked to board health.
What they're getting next year is not what they thought, but the year after '25, there's pretty much a change coming toward now.
Yeah.
That's the reason we can't cut the rate enough or can't cut their taxes at all, because it's that math. We keep going. No problem with it.
Thank you.
Take a little bit of time. Okay. Child advocacy, Mr. Yeah?
Good morning. My name is Kelly Jody. I'm the executive director of the Children's Advocacy Center of Southeastern Indiana. We work with the team of first responders to deal with allegations of child abuse, all types of child abuse, neglect, as well as witness to crime. We have offices in three locations, one being Greensburg here, next to the RMC building, as well as Stills Row and. One being Greensburg here next to the R A M C building, as well as Stills Row and Madison. Um, in your packet, I have the formal letter, um, of request. And then I also brought some, um, case data. Um, the, the case data sheet with the two thousand nine, um, date on the top. That outlines all of the counties that we serve. We do not charge anyone ever to come there. We are three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven service. We work primarily with law enforcement prosecutor's office as well as DCS. DCS is our, excuse me, Department of Child Services is where we typically receive the majority of our referrals to our office. Um, we do have seven employees. Um, we have three advocates, um, three forensic interviewers, and two education prevention specialists, um, that deliver our education program in our schools, um, throughout the entire region. Um, so yes, the two thousand twenty-two, uh, data sheet is of, uh, last year. Uh, you'll, you may remember that our number was the highest in two thousand twenty-one as we were still, um, receiving a lot of referrals due to the COVID lockdown. So while it looks like the number went down to five thirty-eight in two thousand two, um, let's remove the influx of the COVID situation. Um, we are still already this year, um, thirty percent higher at this point in time when I ran the data on Friday before I left the office. So our numbers are up this year. Um, even with the number being five thirty-eight, which sounds drastically lower than the six forty from the year before. Um, five thirty-eight is still, uh, the biggest number without COVID included, without the COVID lockdowns included. Um, so one thing I'm really excited about is the one side of your packet. Um, this is the infographic for ease of reading with where our funding sources are drawn from. And then our abuse prevention program. This was super important, um, and it was not offered in this county by us. So, um, we, I'm very happy to say that in August, we will be coming to, um, the Greensburg School District. So that's a kindergarten to twelfth grade, age-appropriate and research-based program. Um, we go classroom by classroom rather than large, um, assembly-style prevention education. Um, what sets aside our program from other large assembly-style abuse, um, awareness programs um, is that we do have, uh, one-on-one time with students in classroom who advise that they have concerns about something that could be happening. Um, I do foresee that the, uh, numbers typically escalate when we have visited a school district. Um, so I cannot foresee, um, what those numbers will look like for Decatur County at this point in time as we won't be there till August. But, um, that was the big initiative that I hope to work on from last year to this year. We were successful in, um, creating that relationship with the school district and the superintendent. And, um, that was one good thing that occurred in the past one year. And then always, the purpose of a CAC is to minimize trauma. Um, so if you'll take a look at this infographic, you can see that, um, what used to happen when, um, kids needed help for abuse or neglect or, um, witnessed to violence. It typically started with a disclosure to someone plus, you know, maybe a school counselor or a teacher or any, anyone. And then that person would notify and then it would go to, uh, potentially a psychiatrist, a school counselor, DCS, the law enforcement officer, detective, and then we have to talk to, um, the, all the folks involved in the legal process. And so when they come to the CAC, because we are highly trained, we are undergoing accreditation. So training is of almost the importance at this point in time to make sure that we are in perfect alignment with the National, um, Child Alliance, um, Children's Alliance standards. They will be coming to do site visits here, um, at, at a point soon. Um, but, um, we make sure that everything is taken care of at one-time situation. So the child doesn't have to continue to repeat the story and relive it and tell so many people. And I cannot tell you how many times, when done improperly, um, by the time, if someone has asked and then asked so many questions and then the child has told their story over and over and over and over again. By the time they get to the CAC where we have the equipment, uh, and it's, you know, suitable for court proceedings. And the question, line of questioning is a highly, highly specialized protocol. By the time they get to the CAC, when they've been asked too many times, they typically just say, I'm so sick and tired of talking about this. I don't want to talk about this. Sometimes they won't talk at all. Um, and sometimes they will disclose again, but hopefully it will be the last time. So the goal is to make sure that, um, we get their story one time and it doesn't need to be repeated. Um, also that I find noteworthy is with our school, um, prevention program. We have been, um, recognized by the State of Indiana for our mandated reporter training. And so my director of community outreach, Shannon Perry, has, um, provided the mandated reporter training. That's so important, um, to help people realize and recognize when to call, what it looks like to call, and how to call properly. Um, anonymous reports, um, are not as effective as someone identifying or distinguishing themselves. And you'd be surprised how many times teachers or school counselors, um, don't want to report themselves because they have to work in our community every day, all day with parents or potential perpetrators, et cetera. So, uh, our reported mandated reporter training, um, has been provided by the CAC to all of our staff. Um, and all the rest of CAC, uh, staff throughout the State of Indiana. And it will be, um, offered to all of our law enforcement and Department of Children's Services. Um, prosecutors are welcome to it. And, um, yes, so that was another positive thing that's occurred over the past year. And, um, again, uh, thank you so much for always continuing to support what we do. Um, you are fully staffed here in Greensburg all the time. Um, Heather Scott and Ellen Hakens, and, um, I do appreciate it. And thanks for listening to all that's going on with the CAC.
I'd like to see a breakdown of how much is in the county and how much is in the city. Cause I see Greensburg as a city only pays three thousand. We pay sixty-five hundred.
Yes, that came from the police department. The three thousand Greensburg Police Department.
So the city of Greensburg that pays anything.
Yeah, the sheriff's office.
Your question, ten thousand?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, we do the same thing on that. I think we, according to my budget, we gave you seventy-five hundred this year. You might also have any questions because it is a good program, correct Nate?
Oh, best.
Okay. I, I know you use it.
We use them routinely. They're consummate professionals. We're grateful for the help they provide every single time they go over there without fail.
And you go to all schools, right? Decatur, all Decatur County schools, not just Greensburg?
Just Greensburg right now. I only have two staff and we're covering, um, oh, how many buildings? Nineteen buildings last year with only two gals. So, um, I would love to hire a third person. I have counties screaming for help for this prevention program. Um, those prevention folks, uh, it is a Senate bill mandate that the program be offered in schools. However, the state isn't funding it at this time. So I did, I was able to squeeze the prevention, um, folks onto a federal supplemental grant for this year. It ends on September thirtieth. I will continue to be able to fund them through general budget and fundraising dollars. But that's only to maintain what we have currently, including Greensburg, um, for sustainability purposes. But, um, yeah, we would love to be in the rest of Decatur County as well as, um, Scott County is, is begging for it, um, all the way down towards Clark, et cetera. But that's going to require more personnel because they go, you know, if you look at their schedule, like it'll be several weeks to get through Greensburg and then they'll move to South Ripley. And it'll be several weeks to move through the entire district because it's kindergarten as well. Then we go to Myland, then we go to South Dearborn, then we go to Rising Sun, and then we go to, um, Massey Consolidated. And those larger school districts obviously take a longer amount of time because we don't, we try to avoid the larger assembly approach because we have students that will connect better in a small group setting and let us know if something's wrong.
Do you currently have students at Northland South Decatur?
Oh, that, I do not, we do not track what school district they, uh, visit from us. So, oh, okay.
Yes, for sure.
And unfortunately, I cannot use volunteers in this situation. Um, I can use volunteers for fundraising purposes, which we rely heavily on our volunteers. Our kings and queens from Mardi Gras, which you all are aware, um, represent from kings and queens for the Mardi Gras fall in February. However, I can safely use volunteers for this situation because the training requirements are so rigorous and the nature of HIPAA is problematic. And so, um, it has to be, I mean, it is a full-time employee-type situation, so with a lot of responsibility. When they do the education prevention program, um, the child, the children do have an opportunity to say whether or not um, they are safe or not. And should they mark that they are not safe, then, um, we do, uh, sit with that. And as a result, we have to make, uh, minimal facts with minimal facts because we don't want to re-interview. We have to make a determination on whether that is a hotline, um, call or not. And so, um, if you look at that one, um, piece that was listed. It's in the packet. It's here for mention. Um, it tells you, um, how many interviews were completed at the school level. And sometimes this is an emergency where we are literally concerned about putting the child on a bus and sending them home at the end of the day. So, um, you can see we have four hundred and twenty interviews, which means four hundred and twenty kids stated out of the sixteen schools. We had five thousand, so four hundred and twenty, so they interviewed, they did not feel safe. And that resorted in forty-one hotline reports. So that's an immediate, um, safety issue that, um, uh, obviously they're not all substantially good. So, um.
It does look like the schools that you're doing prevention at are contributing though to the budget, right?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, the, the prevention, I put it on the bottom, like in the, in the incomes. But we continue to do, um, our, we continue to have our, um, collaboration or MOU with our mental health folks. Um, and, um, CMHC is up here. Um, and we still are doing our referrals to Cincinnati Children's Hospital. Um, and, uh, we are also still offering the telehealth option through Cincinnati Children's for, uh, for Greensburg as well too.
Any other questions, concerns? We'll take a look.
Well, thank you.
See how much we get coming out of the riverboat fund.
I, I expect it to be down this year as you mentioned earlier. So, but thank you. Thank you. I understand where it comes from.
Thank you, man.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Good to see you.
This out.
So I'm just kind of going over what we went at the last meeting. I revised it, you know, a little bit. Um, so on the second page where I've got highlighted that I've been told by like a lot of other clerks from other counties sent me this. The, um, this is from the State Board of Accounts, the annual clerk's manual where first or chief deputy in each county is entitled to appoint a first or chief deputy without the approval of, you know, the Board of Commissioners, um, to county or superior county court or has two or more courts, which branches county offices maintain. The deputies in charge also should, can be appointed as a first or chief deputy and shall receive compensation as such. Um, found, um, in our clerk's, per- per- perks perpetuation fund, which is not tax dollars, these are fees that we've collected from our office. Purely the balance right now is over a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So if we paid an additional four thousand dollars per year from this fund, it can be maintained. So in not asking for like any additional funds, I just made approval for you guys to be able to pay that out. You know, election deputy, first deputy job, it is not just an H for Monday to Friday job. You know, it calls, texts, emails in the evening or weekend. There's a lot to it. Um, and just reminder that, you know, we are projected to save the county tax dollars almost thirty-four thousand dollars over the next four years alone by Patricia's, you know, if not utilizing, utilizing micro boat as we do currently. We do currently pay them a lot. And I do think it's highly important to not have a high turnover rate for this position. And it's, can't really compare us to other offices, you know, want to say open a can of worms. We are the only office that does elections and there is a lot to it. And I just think that, you know, this is something that we need to look at and start doing.
What do you use out of your perpetuation fund?
I'm sorry?
What do you use that perpetuation fund for? Or other things that come out of there annually?
Not much, no. Mostly.
What can you use?
Janet?
Uh, preservation of records. So that includes paying someone to preserve records, maintain them. And election records have to, they're permanent. You have to have those and that's by the state.
And currently she is going through every single one, trying to make sure that they're updated and current. And there is literally a file kind of full of single papers to go through. And that's, that's a constant thing. That's not something that's going to ever end.
How many counties have the first election deputy or first deputy? Most of them have one.
Most of that have reached out to me, have at least a first deputy or chief deputy or both. And then some second deputies and are down.
Is there wages compared to what you're asking?
Say that again.
Is the wages you're asking for compared to what their?
Yes. Some, some obviously pay more.
Yeah, I just wondered in a county of our size, whether it was, you know, whether you're comparing apples to apples.
Yes.
Understand what I mean?
Yes. Yes. And some of them do like the percentage of what the clerk gets paid, but most of the person they reach out to makes more. And, uh, and I do accept.
Any other questions, concerns? I do know we have Kelly looking at salary study, correct?
And that's going to be at least probably a couple of years out, right? Because that's not even going to be about. It's going to be seven months.
Should be about next year, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready to start, um, the first of July, but it's going to be at least a six-month process.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be until at least two thousand and twenty-five.
Huge election.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do, huh?
Huge election next year.
Yeah.
Well, funding is there, so we're not, we're not asking, we're not asking for us if anything additional funding is there and that's what's there for, so.
Yeah.
And you're not asking for that thing now, that you first.
Uh, we'll just start with the next year.
So I'm okay with this.
You don't make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we'll pursue the perpetuation fund. It's also, yeah.
Kenny, next motion. Bill seconds. Any other discussion?
Yeah, are there, is there any other fallout or concerns we need to have about having a first deputy? Does that mess up anything HR-wise or anything like that?
Yeah.
Those are permanent, even if first change of elected official?
This is permanent for Patricia.
For?
For Patricia's.
As long as she's, as long as she's employed.
Yes.
Okay. So elected official can't switch?
Correct. Not a chief deputy. Yes.
We did have some discussion about this in our compensation meeting and how that should be handled, whether it should be at a salary or a per-election type thing. So that was something else that we wondered if, because sometimes we don't even have elections depending on the, on who's running and all of that.
I don't think one this year, will it?
Right. I don't know.
There will be one in Westport.
There still will be another one.
There will be one in Westport?
Yeah.
So you have to open them all up?
Yep.
We won't.
Well, maybe. We do have those, I believe, now.
Just Westport area.
Just the Westport area.
Yeah. There's no reason to.
There's no reason to pay for throughout the county just for Westport elections, so we'll stick with just from this one.
We also found funds out of our own budget to pay for the election cage, so we didn't ask the county for that either. We're funding that.
I have a motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? All who's in favor? Any opposed? Don't need a hand count?
Do we have a pose?
I don't have any pose.
Okay, so.
Need a signature anywhere, or we good?
She has submitted, you see the one forty-four, that's the salary.
Okay.
So we're right on the back of the approval, like, just there. It's thirty minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Harder. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, chairman, thank you. For the record, my name is Nate Harder, I'm a prosecuting attorney. I sent you an email to your government emails, in case you did not receive that, I brought a copy of it. Outlining here today, of course, we're calling salary issues. There are two asks or topics, if you will. The first, I hope is easier, and so that's why it's first, hopefully deal with that swiftly. Before moving into a larger discussion of the budget proposal that I am intending to put in front of you. However, the first issue is, I I recently lost a deputy prosecutor. It was a mutual parting of ways. It so happens that he's receiving more money now than he was when he was here. And his wife, who is a deputy prosecutor in my office as well, also knows now what the job market looks like out there. I'm going to need to fill that position, and, well, we're trying to figure out what I should pay. And a part of the discussion has been, what should a deputy prosecutor make? What should somebody who has a Juris Doctorate, a terminal degree, make, even out here in rural, small-town Indiana? What we found is that the going rate is eighty thousand or eighty thousand plus. That's statewide. We mentioned this Wagner Erwin Shealy firm that is performing the salary study for Decatur County. That firm also was recently retained by the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, and we are gonna get more into that, I hope, in sort of the phase two of the discussion. But pertinent here, their recommendation for statewide prosecutors, minimum starting salary, fresh out of law schools, eighty thousand. Now, in this, I have three deputy prosecutors that are full-time. One of them, one of the positions pays eighty-six, the second one pays seventy-four, and the last one pays sixty-eight thousand. I have, the one that left was the eighty-six thousand. So I have enough money in that line item to pay that person eighty-two, eighty-five, eighty-six. But then I would have left behind the two deputy prosecutors in my office who might have more experience. Making significantly less, not just a little bit less. And so I've worked with Christie Smiley, looking at the the balance and the funds. The fact that we have not filled this position yet and won't be filling it until probably August, as well as some unpaid leaves we have, some maternity leaves. And there is room in the budget this year without spending any new dollars to pay all three deputy prosecutor positions eighty-two thousand. That would level the playing field while we wait for the study to come out. It would allow me to be competitive, and it would allow me to not leave anybody behind in the process. I think that's consistent with the going rate around the state, and that's why I brought that proposal to you, costing you no additional dollars. The request would be that you amend the salary ordinance to allow me to shift the money that you've already appropriated around to pay all three deputy prosecutors eighty-two thousand. So that's, that's the first item for discussion. I think it might be appropriate to stop there and answer any questions you have about that before moving on to the bigger picture. Although I know the two are related.
So that's, that's for this year, what about next year?
Yes, sir, you're a hundred percent right. In the letters, this will cost you no additional dollars in bold, not in bold this year. And I'm aware of that. Now, it depends on what the council's gonna do for raises, but I don't think it would, it will cost you more next year than this year. But I don't know that it will cost you much more than what the increase would have been, for example, had, had Mr. Clark stayed, okay? So I think what the compensation committee is hoping to recommend, and I don't know how much this has been discussed out loud here, but. There's a discussion about a percentage, there's a discussion about taking into account years of service. And using those numbers, Mr. Clark and Ms. Orchard, both would be getting pretty substantial raises because of those years of service. That would have been coming down the pipe anyway. So there would be an increase, but it would be a moderate increase, something like five thousand, probably not more than ten, over the year previous. And certainly, given that these aren't raises, significant raises, if the council were to say, for these positions, we're not doing the two percent plus one deputy years. I would understand why the council would say, no, no, you got your raise right here, my heart graft rate two for everybody. I know that's treating us differently, but then again, literally nobody else has a Juris Doctorate.
Well, but you still have to sustain the increase from your non-직원.
Well, that's coming. That's coming either way. The Wagner Erwin Shealy study is coming, and part of what we're hoping to talk about here today, and I have with me, from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, Brock Patterson. Who runs our legislative affairs at IPAC, and also my chief deputy Doug Brown, to help answer questions about this bigger picture. But the firm that we've hired to tell us what do people get paid, what should they get paid around the state, has already studied my office. They've already done that study, and what they recommend is a minimum starting salary of eighty thousand. So we sort of already have a preview of what they're going to say for us to, and by waiting until we're done, all we're doing is hamstringing my belief in competitive and paying my people what they're worth. I I cannot be in a position where I lose another deputy prosecutor to the market, which is. A high potential possibility, and have a maternity leave, which I know is coming this fall, here in a month or two. Two and a half. And then Mr. Brown and I are together, the two of us, handling all three courts. That, that can't happen, I have to be competitive right now. And since we already know what the Wagner Erwin Shealy study is going to say about my office, I'm, I'm asking you to float with me for a year or two until the study comes out. And if the study comes back and says that we're supposed to be reduced, and that's what the study says, I, it won't, it's not going to, that's what the study has already shown statewide. And to my fellow members of the committee, I know that's not what we've discussed as a group, but this is, it's a little bit different because they have Juris Doctorates. I've gotta be competitive.
Any other questions? What's next year gonna look like?
Last year, the county general budget for the criminal division on prosecutor's office side was seven hundred and eighty-four thousand change, I believe. The budget proposal for this year for the criminal side of prosecutor's office is gonna be one point four million. Here to tell you more is Brock Patterson. So I would like to bring Brock up here. The Prosecuting Attorneys Council engaged the services Wagner Erwin Shealy, in order, which is a firm out of Lumsy, and that most counties use and respect. To do staffing studies, do compensation studies, write job descriptions, that's why we hired them, they're really good at what they do. And they brought us back results about what the state is facing statewide. Brock can tell you about the formula that they used and results that that generated. My budget proposal that I'm trying to tell you about out loud and transparently in public is significantly larger than what I know the council can do. But it reflects the reality of that study. It shows us a direction that we can chart, and maybe shows us where there's room for incremental progress towards that larger goal. I, I don't mind the effect, the physical effect and reaction that I just saw on your faces. But I do want to give the chance to explain where that number's coming from, that this is not something I pulled out of thin air. That there's a basis for it, and maybe that helps explain why the ask is what it is, and where we can go from there. So next, I'll hand it over to Mr. Patterson.
Good morning. So Nate, sorry, give me a great introduction for the caveat that I'm gonna tell you that you just spent a lot more money. So, sorry about that. My name is Brock Patterson, I'm the Legislative Council and Director of Governmental Affairs for the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. So what I do day to day is, I'm over at the State House, where I'm talking to our folks in Congress about all things criminal law-related prosecutorial. I've been here for three years, I also have a Juris Doctorate, and I was with the Legislature three years before that, so. I've, I've been around this game for a while, and, you know, I've heard, heard these concerns. I used to work with Representative Thompson, Representative Cherry, who's a little bit closer to here, so I've been around the Ways and Means vote for quite a while. To kind of go over what the big picture is here, we hired WIS about a year and a half ago to start doing a statewide study of the state of prosecution. Where we're at in every individual county with their pay, with their staffing, and what their workload should look like. And the results were what we expected, but they were staggering. Across the state, we're over four hundred lawyers short, and that's deputy, deputy attorney could have got about eight hundred, meaning about twelve hundred. The way that we determined that is, we didn't use our own numbers to kind of budge it out. What we did was we took the Public Defender Commission, statewide commission, it's been around since the mid-eighties. And took their public published record that all counties that opt in to the state reimbursement have to abide by. And we took their numbers directly and placed it over our deputy prosecutor numbers to say where we at. And that's where we found that we're four hundred and forty short as of, as of twenty nineteen. So I'm sure that that's even larger today. We constantly have in nearly every county some sort of opening for a deputy prosecutor, chief deputy prosecutor, or pulling from each other's counties, kind of reaping them. In, you know, one way, shape, or form, just to get experience. And I'll tell you that Decatur County is no different. Last time I checked, they have five and a half attorneys, so five full, including Nate and the chief. And they have a half, which I would assume is your child support, so. Five and a half, the study suggested based on the caseloads from twenty nineteen, my guess is twenty-two, twenty-three, or about the same, if not higher, that they're supposed to have ten. So they're awfully short, and based on the numbers that they're paid, they're underpaid from what our suggested minimum was. I want to go into the minimum a little bit, only because it's a little outdated at, at this point. And the reason why I say it's outdated, eighty thousand is still a great goal. We took that number from, again, the Public Defender Commission's recommended minimum annual salary for a deputy, deputy public defender. So that's, again, we're kind of doing a whole tip for tap there. But after the legislative session this year, big budget year, there were some numbers that were appropriated in different areas, and now we've got some averages from some other. You know, criminal law-related fields, one of which is, so our statewide deputy average salary right now is about seventy thousand dollars. That's, that's all across the board, these are all attorneys, whether big county or small, obviously the big counties, for the most part, have a higher average salary. And that kind of hurts where, you know, Nate's coming from. That hurts because it's, it took me forty-five minutes to get to Minneapolis today, and if I'm weighing, you know, eighty-six thousand dollars was, was what he was making. But if I'm weighing sixty-eight thousand dollars, which is lowest deputies paying, and I can go up to Hamilton County and make ninety-seven as a start, that's, that's pretty good. If I have a few years under my belt, I'm into the six-figure range. That's, that's kind of worth the drive for me. DCS, DCS attorneys, we're losing a lot to them, which I cannot believe I'm saying, but we're in a world where DCS is averaging, their attorney salary is averaging ninety-seven thousand dollars a year. If you're a supervisory attorney, again, you're gonna be higher than that. The state just passed a huge raise for state police, DNR, ex-sys police, and now they're going to average with a starting bonus seventy-three thousand. And that's not, I'm sorry, that's not average, that's their starting pay right out of the academy, seventy-three thousand. So the folks that are bringing you these cases, bringing the prosecutors these cases, might be making more. Compared to the person that has to prosecute that case and has, you know, and this is nothing against any of these professions, so please don't take it that way, but. Someone that has more schooling, it, it kind of goes, it's kind of counterintuitive to what, what we always thought of with higher education. And then there was one other raise. So there is a portion of the code that was created way back when for what are called state-paid deputy prosecutors. So the way that the state works is the elected and the chief are both paid by the state. You get a federal reimbursement for your fourth deputy prosecutor, and then there are some state-paid deputies that were created for mental health institutions and DOC facilities around the state. So there's about twenty-six right now across the state. After this past session, the state did give them all a raise, a change in their calculation of how much they get paid based on the elected prosecutor. So their minimum salary, all paid by the state, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So just to show the stark difference of where some of our deputies are compared to others, this is a huge, huge change. There, so what we did during session, after having the results of that study, was go to the legislature and let them know, let them know where we were. We had four bills that were filed that dealt with this issue in, in various ways. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, there was some, you know, everybody asks for money during a legislative session, or a budget year, especially one where you're, we have so much, right? And we didn't get what we asked for at the end of the day. Some, some, some folks wanted it, some folks didn't, and that's just, that's just where we end. Now, as the first go-around, I'm sure that that's not going to be, you know, it, it, we were asking for twenty million a year from the legislature. And that was the fund a third of the state to give us to the numbers that I'm, I'm talking about. So really what we're trying to do is stop the bleed first by raising everybody's salary, and then backfill all the positions that we need. What that proposal would have looked like was a seventy percent reimbursement to the counties for deputy prosecutor salaries. So you all still would have had a foot in the game. But obviously, the load would have been lightened a little bit. What we did math-wise was basically, we realized that at seventy percent, you could raise how much you needed to pay these folks, you could backfill those offices. And then after reimbursement, you'd be paying either the same or slightly under what you were paying prior to the reimbursement. So really, there wouldn't be much or any cost increases with the county. The next steps for us, I actually have a meeting after this at one o'clock with Speaker Houston and Representative Thompson, kind of go over. You know, what happened during session, what are our next steps, because we're, we're in crisis mode at this point. So unfortunately for that, though, it's, it's a twenty-twenty-five realization, so we've, we've got a couple of years here to figure out that that bleed is not gonna stop from the prosecutors across the state. And I would hate for, you know, Nate or anyone else around here to, to lose additional deputy prosecutors. I will say, because there is so much money out there, Representative Ryer, I talked about a local option income tax option for volunteer firefighters. I believe that calculation is a made provision that comes out of the public safety tax. So it's just, you all are already doing that, but that's, you know, just kind of like the guideline of what counties can do. The legislature did, though, pass a new local option income tax specifically for the county judicial system. It could fund up to half of your county costs associated, so that's your public defender, that's your courts, that's the deputy prosecutors and staff, your probation department. So all of those things can be up to half, you can look at that bill, Senate Hold Act four seventeen, Senator Holdman, Representative Thompson were the authors. And there, if you look at the fiscal on it, it, it shows what they estimate to be, you know, the revenue that, that can be generated from that if you use the max. Obviously, you still have your, your tax caps, but that, that is another option that's out there, and contrary to the public safety tax, there's no sharing with. Any, you know, local municipalities, it's all county funds. So that, that is a little bit more advantageous, especially if you don't need to build a new jail. But I, I, I think I've covered quite a bit of where I've been working at, but if there's any questions on any of these numbers, happy to answer.
So the state's not gonna help at all?
So the state?
Is that the end of that?
Right now, no, the state knows, this, you know, our friends in the legislature know that this is a problem. It's just, you know, how severe, they, they want to weigh it, I'm not sure. But what we've heard from some folks in the legislature is. But what we've heard from some folks in the Legislature is, well, this is a county problem. I don't think the county should be paying any of this. Or we've, well, we've actually heard the county should be putting the whole bill. And we've heard from other folks, the county should be paying for any of the state officers. They should be, the whole office should be paid by the state. And, you know, I, I, I went back and did the math and there were, it's like 140 new courts have been created statewide over the past 15 years. And I think the state kind of caught on this year because there were about 33 more that were requested and none of them were created, they all got shot down. So we're, we're kind of getting this, this spot where they realize that the bill is getting high and there are other folks that are mandated to staff those courts that aren't, aren't keeping up.
If, if I could, that's one of the reasons, one of the asks that I'm here for today. The first and the one that I hope is easiest is to allow me to pay the money I already have to, for $82,000 for reaching the three deputy spots by entering salary ordinance. The second was to raise awareness around the statewide issue and to help explain the large budget ask while preparing for what will be an incremental discussion and not something where I expect you to give me the whole thing. But I also don't want to underestimate the power that this council has, that each of you has as a counselor, especially through your statewide organizations. If this is an issue where you agree that there is a need, but you're concerned about the county's ability to double my budget, then it may be time to involve your statewide organizations in working with Brock and others to work with the Legislature to say, come on board, state. If this is something you want us to do and do well, then your power as members of your statewide organizations shouldn't be underestimated. And I would encourage you and ask you to join us as we ask for this in the next year or two, to ask the state to come aboard. I know that's a huge number, I'm not expecting you to do it. I am asking you to work with me to float for a year or two while we wait for the study to come back and while we attempt to get state funding. While understanding that that's not a promise, it's an effort.
So like, we had AIC support this year, Ryan Hoff and David Portoff were great to work with, or Bonner, sorry, that's, Dave Powell, sorry, David Bonner. And then from the Commissioner's side, Jake German and I are great friends. So we've all had, you know, kind of boots on the ground in the State House, but it's a lot better to hear from all of you from every county across the state when we're trying to make this big push and get a lot of money off of your shoulders, so.
Well, it just so happens that the ICCA Council meeting is this weekend.
Great.
And I'm the Secretary of that, so I'm sure we'll have some discussion around that. Some of the concerns I have that I haven't heard discussed, the recommendation is for us to go from five attorneys, and thank you for what you guys do with five. But to suggest that we need twice as many when we're functioning with five, not saying that we can't function better, seems like a pretty big leap.
Right.
The other thing I would have a concern with is we're going from 10 to five. Obviously, that's a facility concern, which is another cost that would be on top of that because we would have to find a place to facilitate that large of an office. So I haven't heard a lot of discussion around that, but those are other things that would be concerns.
Absolutely. And I'm sure that it seems like five to 10 is a huge jump. And that's why I wanted to say that these are well established numbers that over two thirds of the state accept for reimbursement purposes. And while I don't doubt that Nate's office is doing a tremendous job, I've seen his caseloads, they're, they're insane. You know, I, I sometimes wonder how this guy sleeps, especially with young ones at home. But, you know, I don't have any young ones of my own and I, I could not imagine juggling it all. But I, I have full confidence that he's doing great. I think it's more so when you weigh the fact that not only are these caseloads, we're, we're not even, we're not even looking at workloads. The public defender caseload standards are cases that are assigned to them. But there's all sorts of cases that we don't file. It's about a quarter of the cases that we have to screen, we have to investigate, we have to work with our law enforcement partners or victims or community members to say, hey, is there something here? And we have to go through all the evidence and determine whether or not we can file this case. Those don't ever go to a public defender and those aren't even in the estimates that I'm providing. So even though it seems like we're doubling, I just think that the reality is that he's so, he and so many others like him are, are just beyond strained and that's why we're seeing people leave, not only for higher salary, but you know, just a, a better work life balance.
Might be why I cried last time I was here.
It was working weekends and nights, right Doug?
No, it's, it's the post conviction case load.
Public defender's fault to deal with that. I will say, Dana, to your point, 2019, it just so happened was an apex year for us. I mean, that was top of the line before COVID, we have dropped down. And so the proposal that I'm giving you actually is not for the all 10 attorneys. It's actually the moderate version where we ask to grow to eight. So it's actually two attorneys shy still of, two attorneys shy of the top numbers.
And that was another concern I had, is what happens when you get to 10 and if your caseload drops, then what do you do with those?
Yeah, and that's why I, I actually presented the moderated version and not the top apex version.
That's not, that's not a bad approach. Just to get at your concern, you know, once the government gives it, it's hard to take away, right? But there is some national DOJ studies out there that say that, you know, as yours, your prosecutor's offices are better staffed, your caseloads may drop. And that's only because there's better screening in play and you're having more time to really kind of figure out the whole situation. So a moderated approach might be the best position for your county to take to make sure that you're not, you know, overfunding.
And to Brock's point, another way we can help mitigate that concern, there are not 440 attorneys that fill those spots tomorrow. It would have to be one every other year for our office and really evaluating, is this still appropriate? Is this still something we need? We would not add four or five attorneys next year. We couldn't, we could not fill those positions across the state if it weren't for. So it would have to be something we would negotiate and incrementally do every year. Part of what I've tried to do during my 10 years prosecutor is to bring you the long term vision and not just, here's a fire, put it out, here's a fire, put it out. With mixed success, sometimes there's a fire, you need to put it out. But I wanted to try to show you four, five, eight, 10 years down the road where I think we're going, rather than saying, here's my, you can put it to me right now. With the exception that I, I would like to begin paying my people and being able to post the new position at 82. So that was more of an action item for today, if that's possible.
So you're saying in August, we're going to have to do some more straightening?
In August, we're going to have to do some more straightening. I, I have an idea of what we might be able to do that would be satisfactory to the council. But obviously, it'll depend on revenues, on what everybody else is asking for too. In the meantime, I just have the short term ask, two, two short term asks. One, the $82,000 for all three, move around the money to do that. So that we can float with me for a year or two while we wait for the study at that rate. And then really get involved with your statewide bodies to help us get the state funding, to take some of this off the plates.
Now, was your study a private study or was it done for the state?
It was done for the state. So we were the ones that requested, but we published, we published the results of that study.
I'm, I'm happy to get you any data you'd like to have.
Well, I just wondered, I just, you know, I didn't know it was an outside firm that came to the state and you were hoping to do.
Yeah, it was Deputy WISF.
When the state said, hey, we.
Yeah, it was WAC, Heron, and Shilley out of, out of Muncie.
We solicited that out of WAC, Heron, and Shilley. So, well, and I'll be happy to get you copies of whatever people are interested in getting. I just didn't want to over loan you the paper.
So if we take those three positions as he's paying them today at 86, 74, and 68, and then change them to 82 each, then that's 18,000 more next year over what we're paying currently. So that comes out.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yep.
Assuming no additional alternative leaps or other unpaid expenses.
Okay. Now let's get to the, what he wants to do. Move up to 82,000. Any other questions, concerns?
I just need an amended 144 for that.
An amended 144, okay, I can do that.
Well, I, we have the funding in there right now to finish this year out to do it. But I would only agree with that if we, I won't agree to, to do it again next year until we go, get our budget looks at and numbers. Because I'm just sitting here running through my mind and reliving the last five years, budget, time, you know, work, how hard it was last year to get the budget and where it was at. And then now we're talking about, you know, just, we're kind of freaking out at a $1.4 million budget, which is not, you know, not unusual when you throw a number like that at us. So how are we going to be able to accomplish this? I guess one question is, is this increase, is it a mandated increase or is it something that we have to just agree to do? I know you're talking, I know the study shows what needs to be done, but is that something the state says you're going to have to do this?
My understanding of it is that it would be like the public defender contracts where, you know, if you were to opt in, you would have to meet these staffing and compensation requirements in order to be eligible for the reimbursement.
Right, yeah.
Under the proposed legislation that did not succeed last year and which has not yet passed.
Right.
So they totally can change.
I understand all that.
The model that we were looking for was if we went to those numbers, we would have to meet the staffing and compensation after which we would get the reimbursement.
Right.
And it would totally, it would be an opt in.
Right.
This request is about being competitive right now in this market, but it's not mandated at all.
Just retain what you have.
I'd like to, yes.
And I mean, do you have, you got, you got?
Three deputy prosecutors, a half time child support deputy, Doug and me, we're paid by the state.
So you and Doug are paying the state.
We are.
No money. So that's what we kick in.
We are.
So you're talking about three full timers.
So it's a lot of moving parts right now just because of the legislation. We know that the legislation usually takes several years to actually get through. So, I mean, we could be getting support from the state in the future, we don't know that at this point.
Definitely evolve.
And we could leave them with this, you would have a problem with that.
I don't think I could in good conscience fight you on that, if you're giving me this consideration.
I mean, though, you know, if we do come up with a raise, they can stay at what they're at.
It would be a raise for both of my current employees, they would have already received their raise. It would be very hard for me to argue for more.
For 2024.
For 2024.
You'll look for that third person, not the 82.
Correct. And that's part of the problem is that's, 80 is sort of a rookie, right out of law school, rank. To go get somebody with years of experience might be up to 90. But I'm not here asking for 90, I don't know what.
Right.
It's a moving target, so I don't know who's going to apply and what range of experience they're going to have. That's why having the 82 available is.
Replace the one you got, what are you posting that at, 82 to?
I haven't done that until I decided, until I heard from you all when I could post to that. So my intention was to do 82. A range of 78 to 82, something like that, depending on experience.
I told you this year, we keep this kind of short, so I'm okay doing it till, you know, the end of this year. We're going to have to look at the budget and see what we're going to be able to. We don't know what we're going to get into on that until it shows up, see where we are. If we have an issue like we did last year, I don't know how we're going to do it, but we'll figure it out, I guess.
I, I think there'll be options for us.
We don't have an amended 140, 40 until you either.
No, you could.
We can go ahead.
We can go ahead.
Because you actually don't sign it up.
I can have that to you today, I promise.
And I'll make a motion that way, approve it to the end of this, this fiscal year. I'll carry on to next year until we review the budget to see where we are.
Got a motion for.
The funding is already there.
To do this this year.
I'll second.
With a look at next year. Second, Ashlyn, motion, McCann, second by Ashlyn. Any other discussion, questions? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I appreciate it, thank you very much. I understand that that's not easy for anybody.
Help, help, saw you can, sir.
I'll do what I can, thank you very much.
Thanks, nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Who's winning?
I'm out for one.
Good morning.
I sent this through the email, the story that they had to get coffee here and still over what we took in for taxes and what the counties made in investments. Yeah, I'm spending money, I'm giving it. Okay. I'm staying corrected, which is a little better because yesterday I mentioned that the Commissioner's leading a lower amount than what we actually made during spring settlement. And this is for the public's knowledge as well. But we took in 26,357, 64313. And the lit local income tax was 1,454,966 for. So during the spring settlement, then we came out at 27,812,59479. So there's still a lot of back taxes out there. As a treasurer in our office, we don't have to send courtesy letters out, but we did just because of the amount of money that they paid to use the ink, the postage and whatnot to recoup some of the back taxes. Others who just actually forgot to pay. And then there's ones in that stack that are eligible for tax sale. And even though I send the courtesy letters, I do send some out prior to the tax sale when it gets certified July 1st. Because once July 1st hits, by state statute, they will incur additional fees. So I'm trying to give them every opportunity to come in to try to avoid those added fees. So, but that tax sale certification will occur on July 1st. And we already have our tax sale scheduled, it's scheduled for September 22nd. And then going back to the making money. Here to date, interest in Trust Indiana, we have earned, and this is just for this year, And then when you look at the, the ARPA funds, there was one entered at 1.5 billion. That alone, since its inception, has made 54,2053. And then the other ARPA fund was 2.5 million. And that's earned 90,47 dollars and a little cent since its inception on interest. And then on the second page that you have is what has been, I guess, allocated in the funds of the ARPA. But currently, those funds are still sitting in trust earning as much money as possible for the county, so.
Currently, I'll make, like outstanding taxes are out there. You got any kind of an idea?
It's over 100 and some, or maybe a million. It's, it's quite a bit because we decided whether we were going to mail courtesy letters out or not. Of course, our spring settlement is always a lot more than fall because people just go ahead and pay spring and fall. And then we have a couple of accounts and they're huge. They go ahead and pay everything in the spring because we, we have an agreement of where our cap sits at the Emporium Bank. Because of the small town bank, we had to raise that limit a little bit. But they could figure out why the difference from this year to last year was because these big corporations ended up paying everything in the spring. So, yeah, so it's always more in the spring than it is in the fall. So I don't really care as long as they pay. So that's all I have, do they have any questions?
Those interest, interest dollars, are they just getting rolled into the county general?
They can be over and I think they could be used for.
Is that where they're going right now though, to like where the county general?
Are they just sitting in the account?
They're in the trust yet.
Okay, but they've been taken out again.
Yeah.
Okay.
So whatever the county decides.
So why roll over, are we getting a deal on that too then?
Very little. When it sits in county general, I think it's only sitting at like.
No, I mean, if it's rolling over in the count, it's still getting the same.
Well, right now, I think trust is like over 5, 5%.
Right.
I have a check lately, but when it goes back over to county general, it's like quite one of.
If we're rolling that, like the ARPA fund's got 140,000 dollars in interest, that money's still in those accounts of Trust Indiana, right?
Correct.
And that, that's drawing the same amount of interest as the principal.
Yeah, I would think if it were.
If it's rolling over in the county.
Should be, if it's staying in there, it should be.
Okay.
And then each time we have more funds in property taxes and we'll move that continuously, we always want to leave a little bit just to pay something back for us and we have to back it out of the, the tax system. But if we do, we think so, and I believe that county general, according, we have to leave a certain amount in for the bank for our contract, but every time we see that threshold go over, then we move that on over to county general as well.
Yeah, very good.
It's pretty good, so, right? So I have.
Okay. I don't have any, I didn't get any to transfer. I'm going to do them real quick.
I said we're short status.
I know, that's fine. Everybody see them online? Transfer. Entertained a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
Bill, much motion to approve a transfer. Melon and second, any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, we've got two additions?
Yes, they were an advertised time wait for your main meeting, so I think we have a specialty, but.
Yeah, we got one for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, Park Road, County Route two-hundred west, Watermain. Comes out of LIT Economic. Everybody see that one? I got it. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I submitted.
Bill makes a motion.
Second.
Kenny seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. County Health Truck Repair, made a motion if what that applies right, correct?
Correct.
So we have to redo it again. Twenty-two hundred dollars for repairing maintenance on a truck from the Health Department.
I'll make that motion.
Kenny makes a motion to approve, in seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are done. Okay, we've got two appointments to make. One is to the library. Chris Ramey's expressed interest in serving on the library board. Presists two years' term.
Is that what it says?
I think that's what it says. Presides in the City Limits Springs, but has done so for two years.
It's completing a term that was vacated.
Bill Reynolds.
Yes.
Just for the, in his term. Is that right? I'll make a motion where Chris Ramey, Bill Reynolds' term.
I'll second.
Kenny makes a motion to appoint Chris Ramey, Melanie seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Although we're gonna sign that, Jan, but you have to tell me the minute.
I'm just, yeah.
Pass it down and I'll see her on the way out. We have one more appointment we need to make, and that is to the Board of Health. I gave everybody a copy of the people that we tabled that for last week, for last month's meeting. Give everybody a copy of who Dr. House sent to me, sent to us. I'm open to discussion, open to anybody that. The only one I really know on there would be Megan Lanning Bowden. I really wouldn't know her. I just knew her grandpa was.
Looks like, I'll put it up on the wall for the daughter.
Yeah, I know.
That's exactly what Dr. House said.
They're all pretty cool.
She narrowed it down a lot, so.
He said he wouldn't do that. Said he would, gonna leave the decision up to us. I'll entertain a motion for, appoint somebody.
Oh, I think Megan Lanning's qualified. That's probably my closest.
You make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Bill makes a motion to appoint Megan Lanning Bowden.
I'll second.
Mel second?
I'll second.
Anybody else have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's all I have on my list. Anybody named Sheriff, Danny Forts?
I'll go back, thank you.
How was, what the train deal?
From yesterday? Transit dancing.
I haven't seen any of them. I just wondered.
State places working at the Ballroom Construction Center. So we need your list to train to them.
Anybody else? Anyone?
Your budget and calendar.
Oh, calendar.
So I can, so we can advertise.
Was the calendar okay for everybody for what we're doing in August?
Yes.
Yeah, August fourteenth for the departments. What time do you want to start? On August fourteenth?
For the, for the. So like to finish for the departments, two o'clock too early?
How many hours did it take us last year, Ken? Do you remember?
I thought we started at either two or three and we got by six-thirty-ish.
Yeah, I'm open to one if we can start at one o'clock. I'm open at one o'clock.
Yeah, I tell you.
One o'clock.
And they, they get ten or fifteen minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think, oh, it's a suggestion.
Because we.
I'll get three, it's a suggestion.
So then August fifteenth, your regular meeting, you'll close that meeting, go right into the budget discussions.
On what? What did we do in that the day before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
August fifteenth.
Right, August fifteenth is a regular meeting and then we'll close it, go right into budget.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the nineteenth is a public hearing, up September. October seventeenth is where we do your budget adoption. That put this in gateway, so that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
That's fine. Paddock, any of us? I'll entertain a motion, Kenny makes a motion.
I'll second.
In seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that one?
We're going out over. I'll take chainsaw after.
Yeah, my husband always yelled at me, he's like, you have no idea. And then we'd really stay on top of that, I'm like, you have no idea how much paper it's like, yep.
Oh, yeah.
It was thirty. No, I, I'm just, I got a lot of county lines, I'm gonna go through.
Yeah. I mean, I haven't seen that thing before.
Get one of them? You may want to leave them.
I just don't want to stand over and blow my cabbages. FBI's man lost time, and it, a lot of trees got brought down. Yeah, I just want them. I know. I mean, I don't know what they're spraying it with, it looks like just grounded. They need to get some crossbow or something. It's gonna kill those trees. Crossbow or milestone.
No idea, where's your name, Kenny? I mean, Kenny.
Crossbow or milestone, both will take trees down. It's ancient orange. Hold on, or, or a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Lockout, they have a bunch of kids that killed that one. I just hate Seattle. Every time I come over that, it was massive, some of them. They got anxious.
Yeah. But, uh, the man is here, so. I know. I gotta go get it.
That's what you need. So that's my most.
Local?
Yeah, are there any crops around there? The other side, the old grass needs it bad.
I drove it.
Line runs through there.
I've been driving it two months ago.
What state, I think?
I know, dude. You had to do it last time.
Are there single?
The state ought to have to maintain those.
No, no. It's all county.
Cause I was talking to the state, you just want to talk to the train. Guy operating the train, cause you don't get that far.
I know.
Multiple times, nothing ever happens.
See you, Doc.
It was.
He was seventy-seven years old.
Early seventies.
Train was moving slow.
Well, never was very fast.
Well, the train was a mile, eight, ten mile, I think it said.
It was backed up for, it was, it had too much. And it just barely, it was just barely past three fifty when it ripped.
Yeah, you could get crossed down the north.
Three fifty, you could get crossed, but you could still see the train. It would just barely, barely pass down.
Cause it normally doesn't go fast, like it'll run.
No, no, none of that.
It must forget, just timing is terrible.
I know, it's new to me, at seven hundred, where it's seven hundred, eight forty-six. At night, you can't even see it. I've almost.
You can't on four hundred either, which we don't go that way, because forty-six is.
Well, see, I call in, I, I've called two or three times about four hundred. They will come out and clean it up. You have to get out under a hard heavy, but you don't need to do all the spare tracks. Right. You know, you know, I mean, you see Conrad out there, you see all, you know.
Those trains are dash games.
Um, they said that Jeremy.
The gentleman that's here, like everywhere.
Yeah.
We saw a dash game.
How did, how did, did it run over him or how'd that guy get it?
He was walking inside the track.
I think that's what he was feeling, I guess. That's not.
He had his head going, he was, he was frightened. Go for four more, your home walk, go, 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 go.
Well, when they blow that damn horn, that thing about shake you out of your car. I know. Yeah.
What the, what's playing over here for China?
I don't know what I'm showing yet. But I'm, I'm planning on going. That was a lead, five o'clock.
Yes.
We've been, we've been about two hours.